You see you're gonna be here in the morning?
Yeah.
What time?
Well, probably when I, I usually leave home, you know, about eight thirty, twenty to nine. I'll swing by here, get that, and then I'll swing over to Ottawa, cause I wanna get it recorded.
Do you want two copies of these?
Could I please? Yeah.
Sure.
One for them, and then, you know, one to get everything file stamped.
Okay.
I got a couple blanks, sorry.
Okay.
Call the Ogleesby City Council meeting to order?
Augubright?
Here.
Cullen?
Here.
Curran?
Here.
Miaski?
Here.
Ravara?
Here. Pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, unuttered, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We're gonna do things a little bit different tonight. We're gonna have our fifty-fifty drawing. Ryland Eckercrowd is the young lady that has agreed to draw the winner's name. The pond is at right at about twelve thousand dollars, and we'll take care of that now.
Under the barrel on the cart.
Already a conspiracy.
Now remember, if you call my name, you get a shot.
No, 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 no.
Oh, thank goodness. We need a new barrel.
Think we need a new barrel. New barrel next year.
That was a conversation two years ago.
Was it?
All right, try one more time. Ready?
All right.
Dig deep.
Okay, ready? Don't look, grab it, just one.
Just one.
Please don't be.
Howard? I'm not sure how to say that. Favorly? I don't know.
Spell it, maybe?
F-A-V?
Here, Amy.
I, I don't know.
Looks like Howard. Can you read it? Somebody read it?
Oh, my God.
I'm not sure.
Howard Favorly. F-A-V-E. Wow.
We have a phone number, though.
We have a phone number. That looks like F-A-V-L-L-T? I've never, yeah. There you go.
All right, keep that.
We have a phone number.
F-A-U-E-C-H.
Howard, congratulations. You need better penmanship.
That's what I would say.
Is that what you know your T.O.?
Flouch, yeah. F-L-U-E-C-H.
Click?
Click. There you go.
Let me see that. Let me see that again.
It's a, it's.
Flick?
Yeah.
It's spelled differently.
F-L-U-E-C-H. Howard Flick. There you go.
F-L-U, wow.
Okay, we've got our winner. Congratulations.
Congratulations, Howard.
Yes.
Wow, okay.
Merry Christmas.
Okay.
If you take a picture of that, put that online.
I will.
I need a motion and second to approve minutes from the December seventh, twenty twenty regular meeting.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from December seventh, twenty twenty regular meeting.
Second.
Augubright?
Aye.
Cullen?
Aye.
Curran?
Aye.
Miaski?
Aye.
Ravara?
Aye.
Public comments on agenda items only. Wait a minute, in case we have somebody to call in.
Anyone know how delayed our thing is?
If we get a call later, I'll go back to it. I need a motion and second to approve the bills as presented for payment.
I'll make a motion to approve the bills as presented for payment.
Second.
Augubright?
Aye.
Cullen? Curran?
Aye.
Miaski?
Aye.
Ravara?
Aye.
in ordinance declaring the developer in default of a TIF redevelopment agreement by in between the city of Ogleesby and Riash LLC.
I'll make a motion to approve ordinance one-one-three-nine-one-two-two-one-two-zero in ordinance declaring developer in default of a TIF redevelopment agreement by in between the city of Ogleesby and Riash LLC.
Second.
Augubright?
Aye.
Cullen? Curran?
Aye.
Miaski?
Aye.
Ravara?
Aye.
in ordinance approving and authorizing the execution of a redevelopment agreement between the city of Ogleesby and Divine Floral and Design.
I'll make that motion to approve one-one-four-zero-dash-one-two-two-one-two-zero in ordinance approving and authorizing the execution of a redevelopment agreement between the city of Ogleesby and Divine Floral and Design.
Second.
Augubright?
Aye.
Cullen? Curran?
Aye.
Miaski?
Aye.
Ravara?
Aye.
Approve one-one-four-one-dash-one-two-two-one-two-zero in ordinance approving and authorizing the execution of a redevelopment agreement between the city of Ogleesby and Gary Grossenbach.
I'll make a motion to approve one-one-four-one-dash-one-two-two-one-two-zero in ordinance approving and authorizing the execution of a redevelopment agreement between the city of Ogleesby and Gary Grossenbach.
I'll second.
Augubright?
Aye.
Cullen? Curran?
Aye.
Miaski?
Aye.
Ravara?
Aye.
Approve one-one-four-two-dash-one-two-two-one-two-zero in ordinance approving and authorizing the execution of a redevelopment agreement between the city of Ogleesby and Oscar's Automotive.
I'll make a motion to approve one-one-four-two-dash-one-two-two-one-two-zero in ordinance approving and authorizing the execution of a redevelopment agreement between the city of Ogleesby and Oscar's Automotive.
Second.
Augubright?
Aye.
Cullen? Curran?
Aye.
Miaski?
Aye.
Ravara?
Aye.
Approve one-one-four-three-dash-one-two-two-one-two-zero in ordinance approving and authorizing the execution of a redevelopment agreement between the city of Ogleesby and Nick Carrico.
I'll make a motion to approve one-one-four-three-dash-one-two-two-one-two-zero in ordinance approving and authorizing the execution of a redevelopment agreement between the city of Ogleesby and Nick Carrico.
Second.
Augubright?
Aye.
Cullen? Curran?
Aye.
Miaski?
Aye.
Ravara?
Aye.
Approve one-one-four-four-dash-one-two-two-one-two-zero in ordinance approving and authorizing the execution of a redevelopment agreement between the city of Ogleesby and David Laura Wyden, Ogleesby TIF District One.
I'll make a motion to approve one-one-four-four-dash-one-two-two-one-two-zero in ordinance approving and authorizing the execution of a redevelopment agreement between the city of Ogleesby and David and Laura Wyden, Ogleesby TIF District One.
Second.
Augubright?
Aye.
Cullen? Curran?
Aye.
Miaski?
Aye.
Ravara?
Aye.
Approve one-one-four-five-dash-one-two-two-one-two-zero in ordinance levying taxes for all corporate purposes for the city of Ogleesby, LaSalle County, Illinois for the fiscal year May one, twenty twenty, and ending April thirtieth, twenty twenty-one.
I'll make a motion to approve one-one-four-five-one-two-two-one-two-zero in ordinance levying taxes for all corporate purposes for the city of Ogleesby, LaSalle County, Illinois for fiscal year beginning May first, twenty twenty, and ending April thirtieth, twenty twenty-one.
I'll second.
Augubright?
Aye.
Cullen? Curran?
No.
Miaski?
Aye.
Ravara?
Aye.
Approve one-one-four-six-one-two-two-one-two-zero in ordinance abating the taxes heretofore levied for the year twenty twenty payable in the year twenty twenty-one to pay debt service on general obligation refunding bonds, alternative revenue source, series two-zero-one-three for the city of Ogleesby, LaSalle County, Illinois.
I'll make a motion to approve one-one-four-six-one-two-two-one-two-zero in ordinance abating the taxes heretofore levied for the year twenty twenty payable in the year twenty twenty-one to pay debt service on general obligation refunding bonds, alternative revenue source, series twenty thirteen for the city of Ogleesby, LaSalle County, Illinois.
Second.
Augubright?
Aye.
Cullen? Curran?
Aye.
Miaski?
Aye.
Ravara?
Aye.
Place on file one-one-four-seven-dash-zero-one-zero-four-two-one in ordinance authorizing the execution of agreement between the city of Ogleesby and A.G. Industrial Supply, Inc.
We just had some information come out today that, that this was, to see if we can get a, kind of a temporary employee. That situation may have changed right now, so until I can get some more information about it, I was gonna recommend that we table this, this, this item unless somebody has any concerns about that. All right, I'd like to make a motion to table one-one-four-seven-dash-zero-one-zero-four-two-one in ordinance authorizing the execution of an agreement between the city of Ogleesby and A.G. Industrial Supply Incorporated.
Second.
Augubright?
Aye.
Cullen? Curran?
Aye.
Miaski?
Aye.
Ravara?
Aye.
Place on file one-one-four-eight-dash-zero-one-zero-four-two-one in ordinance authorizing the execution of agreement for warranty deed between the city of Ogleesby and Eric Joseph Shavosik and Jill Savo- Savo- Shavosik. Gotta kill her.
I'll make a motion to place on file one-one-four-eight-zero-one-zero-four-two-one in ordinance authorizing the execution of an agreement for a warranty deed between the city of Ogleesby and Eric Joseph Shavokas and Jill Shavokas.
Second.
Augubright?
Aye.
Cullen? Curran?
Aye.
Miaski?
Aye.
Ravara?
Aye.
Next one, I need a motion and second. Recommendation to be given to the Ogleesby Board of Fire and Police Commissioners to promote to the rank of sergeant the highest ranking patrol officer in the Ogleesby Police Department.
I think technically we should make it clear that they've tested. It'd be the highest, the highest candidate, yeah, the, the, the highest candidate that's, that's on the list.
Yes, and we would like to do that. I can say that the, the first, the highest candidate would be the officer that is currently within Trident. That officer is doing extremely well there, and should he choose to remain in the Trident position, I would like to promote a second person for sergeant.
We, we do, we do one at a time.
One at a time?
Yes.
We'll do one this meeting, then we'll do, assuming he wants to, then we'll do one next meeting.
So we'll know more information.
So we, so we got clear seniority.
Okay, yeah, okay, got it, because he would be the most senior sergeant.
You got my word.
So I guess I would like to make that motion to recommend, recommendation to be given to the Ogleesby Board of Fire and Chief, Fire and Police Commissioners to promote to the rank of sergeant in the Ogleesby Police Department.
Second.
Augubright?
Aye.
Cullen? Curran?
Aye.
Miaski?
Aye.
Ravara?
Aye.
I don't think we have anything under old business. The next on the agenda would be public comments.
The phone keeps ringing, so I'm gonna call whoever it is back.
Sharon Steele.
Hello?
Hello, you're on public comment currently.
Okay, I have two comments.
Say your name, sorry.
Drew Merriman.
All right, continue on.
This is for Jason Curran. Okay, this is for Jason Curran?
Go ahead.
Yeah, we can hear you.
Okay. With, recently after, after the last meeting, he, you know, understood that all the, all the money that's being collected for the sewer and the water is going into the general fund. And, I mean, if, if it's, that's the case, we're never gonna be able to do the, you know, build a new sewer treatment plant. So why not put that money into a separate fund instead of going into the general fund and paying off the pension for the police and the other city workers?
Okay, I don't think I said all. The term you said there was all. We are not putting all of it in there. What I said was that the water, I made a comment that the water and sewer fund was being supplemented by other funds such as the electric and stuff. That's one of the reasons we had to raise the, the, the water rates, if that's what you're referring to. I don't know if you can.
Hey, I have a second.
Okay.
I have a second question.
Go ahead, sir.
Go for it.
Hello?
Yeah, go for it.
Okay, second question is, is Mayor Dom knows how I feel about some of the past hires as far as the police department. And I watched Tom Martin's kid get hired, and I watched the fiasco with Valley. And recently it's come to my attention that your grandson is number three on the list. I mean, will the nepotism in Ogleesby ever end?
Drew?
I hope so.
I, I guess we can, we let anybody apply and interview. That's the American way. Doesn't mean that he will get hired. One of the reasons he interviewed, he needed some experience on, to go to an interview. He's got a bachelor's degree. He's a bright kid, and I'm sure some police department someplace will hire him. Thank you.
And that ranking on there is based upon their actual testing plus interviews, so.
That's correct. Commissioners report. I have nothing to report tonight.
We did receive some funds from the Illinois Public Risk Fund, a little over four grand, and that, those dollar amounts went directly, actually, it's four thousand six hundred and eighty-one dollars. Those funds went directly to the fire department to replace some of their tanks that they use that were expiring, so we needed to get those taken care of, and we're very excited about that. We have had Hugo Gonzalez from our fired, police department, I'm self-infused tonight, from our police department who recently completed field training officer. So congratulations to him. That's a nice step up. And if you read in the newspapers, you will see that Trident did have another nice arrest, and this time in Ogleesby. I like to see those arrests getting some of the, that out of our system here locally. So good job to the Trident Department and those who assisted in that. I don't have really anything else but just some little bit of hope in that the local hospitals have started to receive the COVID vaccine. The first wave is going to those frontline providers that have face-to-face contact with people who are positive for COVID. I do know that, you know, my valley did receive a good supply, and again, it went to doctors and nurses. It also went to some EMS staff. They will get more of the EMS and, and police and fire as we go forward, as we get more vaccines. So I'm feeling very hopeful for twenty twenty-one that we will be seeing, if not in a ratification, at least a slowdown of the positives that are coming out and hopefully diminish, decrease, or get altogether eliminate the deaths that have been caused by this COVID. That's all I have.
Jase?
All right, thank you. I actually do quite a few things here. I'll try to get through them here. Water Department. I'll start with the negative items and I'll end on something very positive, I think. Water Department. The last letter for me is coming out to the Cedar Creek residents right now that still need sanitary inspections. Again, please take a look at the letter. If you have not had your inspection yet, to make sure that we don't have the illegal hookups, please consider giving City Hall a call so we can come in there after that letter. The next route is, is not gonna be the fun route we're gonna have to take. We'll have to probably go through a, a legal admin route to make sure that we can get these inspections done. But I, as I said before, these inspections do have to happen, and I made a promise that we are gonna get them finished. Next item, Street Department. Most of the no new parking signs, this side of street signs are up. We are out of posts, so they're on back order. I think the only remaining street, I believe, is First Street that has some, that need to go up yet. The goal is, I'm hoping to have them all up prior to our next working meeting, so that way we can probably have some discussions if there's some concerns, how well it worked, if there's some things that need to be modified, whatnot. Electric Department. The new higher lights are up and on for the recoded water tower. I think they look really nice at night. It's very bright, real easy to see. And then Mario Coretto completed and qualified his journeyman lineman course. Other item here is, I was gonna make a mention when we were doing the action items, but it kinda got, we, we voted on it too quickly. Last week, I, I kinda voted no. I thought I was gonna probably not win it tonight as well, but we talked about the tax abatement. I just wanna make a point of clarification. I'm not sure if the, the physical paper got a chance to get it fixed, but I have a subscription to the online paper, and I, I'm not saying I was misquoted, but there was something that was mischaracterized a bit, and I just wanted to make that clear. I don't have a problem with taxes. I don't have a problem that we even have to raise taxes occasionally. What I'm trying to say is, the problem I have is that taxes are being raised every year the exact maximum amount that we can, regardless of the city's finances for the year, whether they were ugly, bad, good, or great. That's my concern, not just necessarily that they're raising taxes, that it's the maximum amount. So I understand that I lost the vote. That's perfectly fine. My only other two things that, two cents I'd like to put in with this is, as I was talking with the city attorney, is I'd like to recommend that if we could, in the future, not wait until December to do this. The reason is, as I'm told, even if we would've voted something different, it would've caused a problem with getting the taxes done correctly in time. I would recommend that for the future, that if we could take care of this in November or even earlier in the year, the reason I say that is, if there's ever a time that we are gonna have a tax, a truth and taxation hearing, or we're gonna go a lower amount or a higher amount, I'd like to give the time and opportunity to discuss that, to make that recommendation. Because now, even if I would've got the vote the way I would've liked to do it, it would've caused a problem apparently with, with getting everything recorded at the county. So again, if we could just do this in the future earlier, I think that would be great for all. And the last item, this is the good news. We talked, we met today, the mayor and myself, met with BHMG today. These were the engineers that were doing the electric study. The, you know, the electric study that started well before the COVID whole pandemic started, and, and it's been delayed for how long? So we did get there. A lot of work is still being completed on it. So the draft format that they have, she's ready to make some recommendations on some things, and I don't wanna go into the details here necessarily, but I will say that it is, it is relatively positive. So what's gonna happen is, we're gonna have a formal, just like we did with the water rate study. We are gonna have a formal presentation at the first meeting of January, on January fourth. They're gonna come up, and they're gonna, they're gonna go over the numbers, and they're gonna give some recommendations. And some of those recommendations are going to be relatively positive. Some more than others, but the reason is, is I wanna be able to get that, that briefing out, so that way at our next working meeting, which we think is gonna be sometime in mid-January, we can sit down and talk about action items that we'd like to do, to see what we can, we can benefit from. And other than that, that's all I got. I wish everybody a merry, merry Christmas.
Colley? Only thing I have is, I spoke to the Park Department, and the only thing we have right now is they're just waiting for the cold to come in, so the pond can freeze over, and we can go from there. Other than that, there's nothing else going on.
Thank you. I take this opportunity to wish everyone a merry Christmas, a happy, safe, and prosperous new year. I wanna thank everyone who worked, participated, and helped make Ogleesby Christmas Drive through such a great success. In these stressful times, it was great to put a smile on so many faces, bring some joy into everyone's life, and we thank everyone who put it all together and make it happen. Since there were only five residents who signed up for the Christmas lighting contest, we will award all, we will award them all and give them a hundred dollars credit on their electric bill. If you drive around through the city, they just did a great job. Ogleesby so far to date has had three hundred and sixty-five confirmed COVID cases. I wanna thank everyone for our residents, businesses who are sacrificed to defeat this deadly pandemic. Hopefully, we'll be able to get back to some normalities soon. Hopefully, we can get a working meeting, and I've got two dates. January thirteenth or fourteenth.
We thought we said it last time.
Please check your schedules and see if we can't make one of those dates work. As far, Jason touched on it earlier about our, our electric rate study. One of the things that, that concerned me and is, is some of the uncertainty that we, that we have out there. I do believe we can, we can do some things. But Ameren has rates their transmission tolls on us by about twenty-four percent. You know, when we keep closing these plants, and there's, there's a number of other, that'll be closed down in twenty-five and twenty-seven, that drives our rates up. Other than that, I don't have anything. I don't believe we need to go into closed session. So what I would entertain, a motion to adjourn.
Dom, can I just ask one thing? We had, I thought we had set that working meeting for January twelfth. Is that not?
We did at six-thirty, I thought.
Can't. I can't.
Oh, okay.
Okay, so we gotta change it.
We gotta change it.
Do we wanna?
To the Wednesday, the thirteenth, you said?
I don't care. I can do Wednesday or Thursday.
Thirteenth works for everyone.
Thirteenth works for me.
All right, six-thirty?
Okay, thirteenth's fine.
Six-thirty.
Done. You still want a motion to adjourn?
I need a motion, second to adjourn.
I will make a motion for adjournment.
Second.
Augubright?
Aye.
Cullen?
Aye.
Curran?
Aye.
Miaski?
Aye.
Ravara?
Aye.
Aye.
What time do we say we're doing that? Six-thirty?
Six-thirty.
Thanks.